What's that?
Okay.
They should make sure you're taking care of that. That is too funny.
It tickled when it sure said it right now.
Yeah, she did.
She says, "I just want to know."
Oh, she's really...
You're being sliding.
She's gonna make up the difference, huh?
She said, "I'm against it." I said, "That's good, 'cause I am." Well, she said, "It's not done." She said, "That's a crowd pushing it." Dee Dee in that crowd.
Right, your old lady's running there back home yet? You ain't on the way back home yet?
No, she's...
Thursday.
Well, she didn't stay no time at all.
Nine days.
Nine days. That's a long time, Beanie Weenie.
Last week. Oh, he's been... You know you ain't in Beanie Weenie.
Yes, I am.
What, Tori's going out of business?
That is too funny.
You won. You only have nine days.
Magic touch.
Getting the right turn, Barbara. The first she's got the third.
I'm touching everything over there.
Call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners' April 20th meeting to order. Our first order of business will be a prayer followed by Ms. Moxley.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, thank you for giving us another day and for all that has been provided to us on this good earth. Bless our community and all who are gathered here this evening. Be with the commissioners in their deliberations and grant them wisdom and strength in making the hard decisions that impact the lives of our citizens. Bless and protect the men and women of our armed forces who serve their country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. Ever-present God, thank you for the beautiful county in which we live and for the dedication of our employees whom we recognize for their services to the citizens of Onslow County during this National County Government Month. Help us to provide new pathways to productivity and fresh approaches to understanding that by our conduct and our service, we demonstrate the gratitude to the citizens of Onslow County for the work they have given us to do. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith traditions and beliefs of all who are gathered here this evening, hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Ms. Sherry Slater, Assistant County Manager, will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. If you have not already silenced your phones, please do so now. The Board affords the public two opportunities to speak during each meeting. The first opportunity for public comment is for three minutes and needs to... Those comments need to be pertaining to tonight's agenda. The second opportunity to speak is for five minutes and may... You may address anything that the Board has authority to. We ask that you sign the log-in in the back of the room. You will be called in the order that you sign up, and at the time you reach the podium, please begin your remarks by stating your name and address. We ask that you address your comments to the Board in its entirety and that all comments are civil in nature. We also reserve the right to respond to your questions if there are any at Commissioner comments, and we ask that no endorsement of a candidate or business be made. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. This is our first public comment. Mr. Manager, did anyone sign up for the three-minute?
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for the first public comment period.
Very well. Mr. Manager, would you like to do the... Item four? Proclamation?
Yes, ma'am. This evening, there is one proclamation that's been prepared for the agenda. At this time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, National County Government Month, April 2015. Whereas the United States is home to approximately 3,069 counties that provide essential services to more than 300 million citizens, and whereas the counties move America forward by providing essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities, and whereas Onslow County proudly employs more than 1,200 employees in approximately 25 departments who provide outstanding service to more than 180,000 citizens, and whereas National County Government Month is celebrated each April by the nation's counties to raise public awareness and understanding about the roles and responsibilities of county government. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the month of April 2015 as County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, and citizens to participate in the celebration activities during the week of April 20 through 24, 2015. Present this 20th day of April 2015. Representatives of the Onslow County Government Month Committee will accept the proclamation. Chairman Eichner will present the proclamation.
Good evening.
Truck along, children.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to say what an honor it is tonight to recognize the employees of Onslow County. I know each member of the Commission has the utmost respect for our employees. These employees are our neighbors, relatives, friends, and we cherish the work that they do on behalf of Onslow County. We believe we have probably the best group of employees of any state, any county in this state. We're extremely proud, and as you witness here tonight, our employees are constantly looking at ways in order to help the citizens by saving their tax dollars and making sure that they're spent in the best way to serve the citizens of this county. So our employees, whether they're in the manager's office or in maintenance or housekeeping, they're a valued part of the team that we call Onslow County Government. So I hope that you appreciate them. I know this Board of Commissioners does because we know without our staff and the employees that work for our staff, we would not be able to do near the job that we are proud to say that we do on behalf of our citizens. So, thank you. Thank you so much, employees. Who's the spokesperson?
He taught.
I would like to say thank you to the Commissioners for recognizing all of our employees, and I want to also express gratitude to the committee who helped plan this week's activities. We take pride in the service to our citizens, and we are grateful for being recognized. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you again. Mr. Manager, would you like to take item five now, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. This evening, Onslow County continues to follow a very particular set of legal processes to refinance two sets of prior debt. Within item five this evening, a public hearing and a motion are required to refinance $36 million in local obligation bonds. Within item six this evening, the Commissioners will also consider a resolution to refinance $27,250,000 in general obligation bonds. Because the types of the bonds are different, different processes are followed in order to effect a refinancing. Together by passing these items and refinancing the local and general obligation bond debt, the county will save approximately $4.4 million in interest over the next 13 years. Due to the requirements of this process, a very formal and specific script must be followed by the county this evening. Item five, public hearings. Item five, public hearing on the refunding of certain local obligation bond debt in order to realize debt service savings for the county. This is the hour, day, and place fixed for a public hearing to consider whether the county should enter into an installment financing agreement. This agreement would provide funds in an amount not exceeding 37... Excuse me, $36 million in order to refund some of the county's local obligation bond debt. This refunding is being done in order to realize debt service savings for the county. The projected savings in interest for the local obligation bond debt over 13 years is $2.4 million. The projected average annual savings is approximately $188,000. The first action to be taken is to conduct a public hearing. The second action to be considered by the Commissioners would be a motion. Madam Chair, shall I open the public hearing on whether to enter into installment financing contract to refinance a portion of the county's existing debt?
Open the public hearing.
At this time, I call on the Finance Officer, Mr. David McColl, to give a brief overview of the proposed refunding and the draft installment financing agreement.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. What we're doing with the LOBs part of the refinancing or advanced refunding is we're refunding three different debt issuances. One goes back to 2006. It was a... For the... The Meadowview Elementary School, and then we also are looking to refund in 2008 for the Justice Complex. We're only going to be refunding the portion that BB&amp;T holds as we modified the rate with PNC Bank a couple of years ago when we did our LOBs issuance. And then we're also going to refine its installment purchase financing, which was for the county building and Justice Complex, for the parking around the Justice Complex, and for some of the county buildings in downtown. The projected interest rate that we're using for our analyses is 2.49%, and the annual savings would be roughly around $188,000, and we'd be saving around $2.4 million over those 13 years. I would like to reiterate, though, that we are at the mercy of the market, so when we do go to the market, these savings could maybe be a little bit higher, they could be a little bit lower, but we will definitely realize some savings as we get closer to the date that we look to do the advanced refunding. Now, in terms of the installment financing agreement, it's an agreement between Onslow County and the Onslow County Public Facilities Company, and that agreement gives Onslow County the ways and means to obtain the funds needed to be able to recall the debt, to realize the savings that we're looking to get through the interest, interest savings over the 13 years. With that said, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. McColl, in our last meeting, I asked for the length of the loan...
It's still going to be the 13... Still going to be the same?
It will still be the 20 years. Yes, we will not go any farther out. It will be whatever the life of the loan is at that time, and we'll be refinancing for that, yes.
And we won't extend the loan period for what we've got now?
No.
Okay. For the... Just for the general public, the interest rate that we're paying now versus what we're going to be able to get the new loan for?
It's a variety. I know with the BB&amp;T portion, I believe it's... It's... I think it's 5.2 or 5.3% back... That was back in 2008. So we're going to see substantial savings there. On the other debt, I would have to go back and look, but that was, I think, one of the larger interest payments we were making. That was back at the financial collapse when we were going to the market for that debt, and we were able to... BB&amp;T, and then it was RBC at the time, was able to really help us help out the county and be able to obtain the funding needed to build the Justice Complex, but I think it was 5.2 or 5.3%. I would have to go back and look, but there's substantial savings and a substantial difference in the interest rate, you know, 2.49%. It's... That's where you're seeing a lot of the savings is off the Justice Complex debt.
Well, I congratulate the staff for beating the bushes and not sitting on their hands and doing nothing. You saved us some money.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Especially that amount of money over a 13-year period, plus the annual savings, right at a quarter of a billion dollars a year, and that's tax money, so...
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, just to make sure, we're not borrowing... In this financing, this is existing money only that we're refinancing. This is not additional money on top of it.
Exactly, exactly. It's kind of no different than refinancing your mortgage. You're borrowing money from another source to repay that loan, and then you're going to pay interest on that money that you borrowed from the other source. It's kind of... Just to make it a little simplified for the taxpayers.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one other question. And is it correct in my understanding that the reason for this is the fact that our credit rating has increased tremendously, so this is assisting in getting a lower rate and helping to reduce what we're going to have to pay back?
It makes a difference. I mean, there's a lot of... There's a lot of factors in there, but it does make a difference. The higher the rate, you'll definitely see a reduction in what you're going to pay interest-wise, so it helped, and it made a big difference.
Okay. No further? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McColl. With Assistant Clerk to the Board, note for the record that the Board of Commissioners has received drafts of the installment financing agreement, the trust agreement, and the deed of trust and security agreement. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Jacksonville Daily News not less than 10 days before the date of this public hearing. An affidavit of publication has been provided by the clerk to the board. By direction of the chairman, this public hearing is hereby opened. There are no individuals that have signed up for this public hearing. Therefore, I will make a call to the audience. If any person in the audience that did not have an opportunity to sign up but would like to speak to the Board regarding the refunding of certain local obligation bond debt in order to realize debt service savings for the county, you may come forward to the podium at this time. There are no individuals coming forward. I would ask Ms. Heather Norris, Assistant Clerk to the Board, if there have been any written statements received on this matter.
Mr. Hudson, the clerk's office has not received any written statements on this matter.
Thank you, Assistant Clerk. While the public hearing is still open, the Board of Commissioners must take action if the Board wishes to do so. This item is available for Commissioner action. There have been no individuals that have signed up. There have been no individuals that have come forward from the audience, and no individuals have filed written statements with the office of the clerk. Madam Chair, this item is available for your action.
What's the Board's pleasure?
Motion to proceed with the proposed financing and approve on a primary basis the installment financing agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion passes unanimously, five to zero. At this time, we can close the public hearing if there's nothing further, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The public hearing is closed.
Let's proceed with item six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item before the Board is the refinancing of general obligation bonds. Once again, this will result in substantial savings to the taxpayers of Onslow County. Much of the work to refinance these bonds occurred at the April 8, 2015 of the Board. At this time, a resolution is before the Board. Item six, general items. Item six A, authorized issuance of general obligation refunding bond series 2015. At its April 8, 2015, meeting, the Board of Commissioners adopted an order providing for the issuance of refunding bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $27,250,000 for the purpose of providing funds with any other available funds for refunding all or a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation school bond, series 2008, dated April 1, 2008, including paying expenses related thereto. The clerk to the Board has caused the order to be published in the Jacksonville Daily News on April 10, 2015. This refunding is being done in order to realize debt service savings for the county. The projected savings over 13 years is $2 million. The projected average annual savings is approximately $150,000. The next step to effectuate the refunding of the 2008 general obligation bonds is adoption by the Board of a resolution providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2015. Ms. Leslie Moxley, County Attorney, and Mr. David McColl, Finance Officer, are available this evening if the Board may have any questions. The action requested is a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, series 2015.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would like to have Mr. McColl come up. I just would like to specify one point. Dave, we just did a refinancing on item five, and this is another refinancing. Why did we not just do one refinancing? Why are we doing two separate?
Well, it's two different structures of debt. The one that we just approved just a couple of seconds ago is a general obligation bond, which the collateral used for that is taxpayer dollars, property taxpayer dollars, so it's voted on upon the taxpayers, and that is used as collateral to issue the debt. Now, the limited obligation bonds, or the COPS, how they're referred to, they are used collateral... Like, for this transaction, for this LOBs that we're doing, we're using the Meadowview Elementary School as collateral to be able to issue the debt and recall the bonds that are out there. So there's two different ways that they're structured, and that's why we had to do it differently.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted the public to be clear on it. Thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item B, environmental health, additional state funding. Ms. Angela Lee will present this item to the Board. Ms. Lee, our Health Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. The legislature established a state inspection, statistics, and fees program within the Environmental Health Section to fund a portion of local expenditures. This program centralizes public health data, invoices, regulated facilities, and distributes the funds in accordance to GS 138-248D. The receipts collected are redistributed to local programs in environmental health in the form of aid to counties. The Health Department, we're excited to say, received a larger allocation than expected, and so we respectfully are requesting approval of additional state funds for environmental food and lodging in the amount of $3,611. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Are you going to be able to find a place to put that?
I promise you we can.
Any further questions?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lee. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item seven, appointments. Consolidated Human Services Advisory Committee. On June 10, 2013, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 13-10 in order to consolidate the provision of social service and Health Department functions under county government pursuant to session law 2012-126. In accordance with the requirements of House Bill 438, Resolution 13-10 also provided for the creation of a Health Advisory Committee, membership of which was consistent with North Carolina General Statutes 138-35. There are 11 members as established by the North Carolina General Statute 138-35. They recently reflect the population of Onslow County and include one physician, one dentist, one optometrist, one veterinarian, one nurse, one pharmacist, one Onslow County Commissioner, a professional engineer, and three representatives of the general public. In order to establish a uniform staggered term structure for the Board, a member may be appointed for less than a three-year term. No member may serve more than three consecutive three-year terms unless the member is the only person residing in the county who represents one of the professions so designated. Dr. Dante Martin, veterinarian category, his term expired on November 18, 2014. Dr. Martin has expressed an interest in continuing his service on this committee and has provided a citizen participation application. Additionally, staff has received an application from Dr. Gina Francis for this appointment. The applications are on file, have been certified by the clerk's office, and this evening ballots have been prepared for the Board's convenience. The decision before the Board is to choose one of two individuals for the veterinarian category with a term which would expire on November 18, 2014. Ballots have been presented to the Board for your convenience. At this time, I'll collect the ballots. For clarification, the term was to expire on November 18, 2017. I may have misspoken earlier. The Commissioners have chosen Dr. Dante Martin to continue in the veterinarian category for a three-year term expiring November 18, 2017. For the benefit of the public, all ballots are open to public record and may be inspected from the clerk's office immediately following the meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you. Nothing was pulled from the consent agenda? Do we have anyone that has signed up for the five-minute public comment?
Madam Chair, there are no individuals that have signed up for the second public comment period.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments for the Board tonight?
Madam Chair, the only comments would be to thank our employees this National County Government Week for the tremendous service that they continue to give to the citizens of Onslow County, and also to thank our Government Week committee members who have done a really great job this year in helping recognize our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments. Ms. Williams, would you like to begin tonight?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to share with the audience that I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. White, Executive Director of the airport, along with a consultant and a few community leaders, and I would just like to reiterate to the people of Onslow County that by local, as often as you can, think of flying out of Ellis Airport with the new airport coming along, and what we're finding through the consultant and the information provided, there's a lot of leakage that's happening, and that term is meaning... People are going to New Bern, to Wilmington, and to Raleigh, and I'd just like to bring to the awareness that the airport supplies 340 people with jobs and $192 million to the local economy each year. So it's important that we keep those dollars here. So it's important that we keep those dollars here in Onslow County as much as we can. I know it's not always possible, but just to put that out there, when you're thinking about booking those fairs, think Onslow County. And I would also just like to say thank you to the employees for the hard work, the dedication that you do to serve the public, to serve our community, and you do it very well. And it's an honor to be your Commissioner, to work along with you, to make the goals and the mission statement of who we are in this county, that we are the people. Thank you, Madam Commissioner.
Mr. Jarman? Mr. Bright?
Only thing I have to say is thanks to, I wasn't able to be here this morning, but thanks to the employees that received their pins for length of service. We got a lot of dedicated employees, and I've been to those ceremonies before, and the years go right on up and keep going, so congratulations to the people that have got the pins and deserved the pins and the seniority. Thanks for staying with us in Onslow County and being good, good employees, and other than that, good night and have a safe trip home.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Mr. Buchanan?
Ma'am, I want to thank the staff again, too. I was here this morning myself in W.C., and it's amazing to see the years of experience we have here. I know there's a lot of five years, but there was several 30 years, and it was several 25 years and 15 years. Like Jack was saying, there's quite a few experienced people that we have here, and you've heard me say it many, many times, I'm very proud of our employees, and I will always be that way. You have worked hard. This building, like we said this morning, you know, this is ours. This belongs to the people of Onslow County and to the employees, and we won't find a better building. Good night, and thank you.
I would just like to echo again my sentiments towards our employees. I think that we have probably the best group of employees that this county's ever seen. We hope that you feel that you're appreciated. We hope that you feel that your work is valued, and we hope that you'll stay with us many, many years. With that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.